Hey Mark, the closed session item will show up as an item on your calendar.
Got it, thank you.
Mayor and council members, you are live on YouTube and it is 6:29.
I see it's 6:30, so I want to welcome everyone to our Monday, April 12th meeting of the City Council, Livermore City Council, and we're going to begin with a closed session. And can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
I'm here.
Councilmember Kek? Here. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. The closed session is a conference with the labor negotiator on a few items. At this point, we have an opportunity for the public to address this on the closed session items. The city clerk, will you explain the process please?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person regarding only the closed session items. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens to raise your hand, instead raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced in for the record. Thank you Mayor.
Okay, do we have anyone, a member of the public that wishes to make a comment?
No comments have been received.
Okay, let's open and close the public comment period. And we will now go into a closed session and then return here at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, it is 6:59 and TB30 will count you in at seven.
TB30, standing by.
Hey, give us the countdown when you're ready.
Got about thirty seconds. Okay, ten seconds. And here we go, in five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Good evening, everyone, to this virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council on April 12th, 2021. We're just returning from the closed session. And let's see, at this point, let's call this meeting to order, and do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Here.
Councilmember Carley?
Here.
Okay. Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Here.
Mayor Warner?
Here. All right, do we have a report out of any action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, no reportable action was taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you, and now we can move to the pledge of allegiance. So you can follow on with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, we're now on to proclamations and presentations, we haven't done too many of these, but they're always fun. The first one will be with respect to Earth Week in the Tri-Valley, and I believe Anne Brown is here to accept the proclamation, can't hand it in person, but I can at least say we have it, and we'll be getting it to you. And I can go through some of the highlights of what it says. And get to the point where I can see it. So it's, we're declaring Earth Week Tri-Valley 2021, April 16th to April 25. Whereas on April 22nd, 1970, millions of people across America took to the streets, parks, and auditoriums to demonstrate against the impacts to the earth after 150 years of industrial development. And I should mention that I was in Boston at that time and went to that first Earth Day. So this is always, it's been a while, we've had a few since then. And whereas climate change has far-reaching effects on the planet, where and whereas the city recognizes the benefit of promoting climate change awareness and effective actions that city operations, businesses, schools, park districts, faith-based communities, nonprofit organizations, and residents can have on our climate. And whereas the city has engaged the community at large to participate in the update of its climate action plan, believing that Livermore can only reach its climate action goals if everyone plays a role. So now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims that April 16th, April 25, 2021, as Earth Week Tri-Valley, and encourages all members of the communities to support solutions that safeguard our climate, water, air, and biodiversity. So I'm very happy to present this to Anne Brown, if you'd like to say anything at this point, you're more than welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Warner. Yes, I am thrilled to receive the proclamation. For several years now, I've been yearning for city involvement and endorsement of our Earth Week, so it's very gratifying to have your support. And I look forward to more partnership with the city to bring climate awareness to our community. With all our events, we have a total, it's getting up to twenty different events, which the public can access through our website, that would be tri-valley-cc-e.org. And we have them in calendar form and lots of links, most of our events are virtual this year, but we will be at the Earth Day Farmer's Market in Carnegie Park, as well as a few other in-person events, and things are being added all the time, especially in the arts area. We also have a youth presenter, so please come, everybody, to check out Earth Week Tri-Valley through our website. Thank you so much to the city council and mayor for your support.
Oh, and thank you for all you and your group does, and looking forward to many more years of cooperation and results. So thank you. So on the, the next proclamation we have is declaring April 18th, 24, 21, as the National Crime Victims Rights Week. And joining us to receive the proclamation is Michelle Joya, the Alameda County District Attorney, from the District Attorney's Office. And again, I've, I have it, and we'll be getting it to you. And I'll read some of the highlights of the, of the proclamation. It's National Crime Victims Rights Week, we're declaring it April 18th to 24, 2021. And whereas in 1974, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office, Victims and Victim Witness Assistance Program was established to aid crimes victims' recovery from the emotional, psychological, social, and economic impact of crime. And whereas the victims slash witness staff assists victims of crime without regard to a person's race, gender, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, gender identity, or immigration status. And whereas in 1981, Congress established National Crime Victims Rights Week to promote victims' rights and services. Whereas the Alameda County District Attorney's Office is committed to building the trust in the criminal justice system, and, and now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore proclaims April 18th to 24, 21, to be National Crime Victims Rights Week in Alameda County. And thanks the staff at the Alameda County District Attorney's Office for their service and commitment in advancing the cause of justice for crime victims and for building a more just community. So here's the plaque, and Michelle, at this point, would you like to say a few words?
On behalf of the Alameda County District Attorney's Office and Victim Witnesses Division, I would like to thank city council for proclaiming Victims Rights Week and recognizing the efforts being made to assist crime victim survivors. It really reaffirms the commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and addressing their needs. We look forward to continuing working with you all, along with the community and community partners. We really just want to say thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you for everything you do, and we'll be getting the proclamation to you as soon as we can. So thank you. And now we're on to item, agenda item 2.3, which is the confirmation of advisory body appointments to the Airport Commission, Beautification Committee, and the Community Asset Management Program Outreach. So is there a staff report at this point?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, this is Marie Weber, your city clerk. Applicants for vacancies on Livermore's advisory bodies are interviewed by a two-member subcommittee on the city council before being recommended for appointment by the full city council. On March 17th, 2021, the subcommittee interviewed applicants for vacancies on the Airport Commission, Beautification Committee, and Community Asset Management Program Outreach Committee, and have submitted their recommendation for city council consideration and appointment. Tonight, the subcommittee recommends the city council confirm the advisory body appointments and direct the city clerk to schedule individual meetings with the new members to administer the oath of office. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from the council? I think, I think, do we have any comments from the public on the, on this item? City clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
Apologize, Mayor, a hand went up and then went back down, I don't believe we have any comments on this item.
Okay, thank you, open and close that. With that, could we have a motion to make, approve the appointments?
So move. Sorry.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Monroe and seconded by Councilmember Banano. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cake?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. At this point, we're going to move on to item, agenda item three, which is the Citizens Forum. And I notice we're starting at 7:10, so at 7:30, I mean, at 7:40, if, if we need to, we'll continue the Citizens Forum past the, you know, to the end of the meeting. So city clerk, could you tell the public how to participate in Citizens Forum, please?
Yes, Mayor. Right. In the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting.
Hi, I think, for me, the audio is breaking up, I don't know if anybody else has the problem, but I couldn't, can't hear you.
Try again, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform, when participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in. When the item begins, please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and then the city clerk will announce at the five-minute left point, and then we'll take two more comments after that. So could we begin, please?
Honorable Mayor, we currently have one speaker, and it's Spectrum Community Services. And Spectrum Community Services, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, thank you, everyone, my name is Carrie Olds, I am the program manager for Spectrum Community Services, serving the homebound seniors of the Tri-Valley. We are currently serving about 275 seniors between the three cities. Today, I've come just so that I could give you an update on how we've been able to manage to get through with this past year with all the support from the cities, as well as the community, so many people have stepped up to volunteer and to be a part of our organization to make sure that our seniors are staying home and being safe. So I do appreciate that and all the support that I've gotten from the city. Tonight, I want to tell you about an event that we are doing. As we have had to pivot from our regular fundraising due to COVID, we have an upcoming event called Show Your Love. It's a cooking and wine event, we will be doing it in conjunction with Truffle Shuffle. It'll be a Zoom event where you will receive the foods that you need to prepare your dish, coordinating wines that will match with the dish. And you will be walked through that with a Michelin chef, a Michelin-trained chef, in order to know how to make the meal. It's really interactive, and in fact, it's so interactive this time that we actually have a member of the San Francisco's, San Francisco Performing Arts, the Hamilton Performance. We actually have the gentleman that is King George is going to be participating with us, so he'll be there, he'll have some, sing, he'll sing some songs, he'll have some Q and A. So if that's something that sounds appealing to you, by doing that, you help us continue to be able to serve in the Tri-Valley. If you're interested in that, you can purchase tickets through Spectrum at spectrumcs.org. All the information is there, the event is on May the 7th. And it takes about, it's about an hour and a half to two-hour event, it starts with the cooking and it goes on from there. But if it's something that speaks to you and will allow you to continue to help us, please look into doing that. We greatly appreciate your support in our endeavors, and I'm gonna log out when my dogs are barking, sorry.
It's just announcing enthusiasm for what you're saying.
Yes.
That's, that sounds great. So I hope everybody can participate, it's wonderful. And one last time, tell people how to, how to get the information. Well, I guess you're, I guess the dog is too enthusiastic, so hope everyone does that, do we have any other public comment?
Sure we do, the next speaker is Kathy Pedrini. Kathy Pedrini, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Kathy Pedrini, I'm a Livermore resident, and I live nine miles from Livermore Airport. I'm asking the Livermore City Council to please consider the negative impact the Kaiser Air expansion plans will have on the surrounding communities of Livermore, Pleasanton, and Dublin. Building four and allowing another large jet-based operator will result in more jets flying in and out of Livermore. How can it not? Once the FBO is built, there's nothing restricting different types of jets from using it throughout the day and night. This means more noise, more pollution, more traffic, and more safety concerns for the Tri-Valley. With three major airports and multiple municipal airports in the Bay Area, we're already living with significant air traffic and noise. In 2005, 1,500 people protested and made it clear to the city council that the community did not want a jet-based FBO at Livermore Airport. Five years later, in 2010, the city council allowed the jet terminal to be built anyway, and FBO Five Rivers Aviation moved in. Within a few years, private charters using Lear jets and Gulfstream jets started operations at LVK. Most Livermore residents have seen and heard these jets because they fly right over Patterson Pass Road and Portola Avenue when they come screaming in to land at LVK. I have seen and heard these jets from my front porch nine miles away. Now, sixteen years later, people still don't want an expansion as evidenced by the 5,800 signatures on a currentchange.org petition. The majority of these signatures, and the number grows daily, are from the three cities most impacted by this, Livermore, Pleasanton, and Dublin. This is a very personal issue for me, my husband and I lived in San Mateo for 25 years, 11 miles from SFO. For most of those years, we rarely heard large jet noise, and then around 2014, the flight patterns changed. For more than two years, we endured frequent large aircraft flying directly over our house at low altitude on approach to SFO. In 2016, because of the constant stressful and unbearable jet noise, we sold our home and moved to Livermore. I've spoken to several residents in Livermore who have said they will have no recourse but to sell their home and move if the jet traffic here gets worse. When we bought our house in 2016, we knew we'd be nine miles from the airport and accepted the fact that we'd hear occasional small aircraft noise. In the last couple of years, the small aircraft traffic has increased and the noise has gotten worse, although the Livermore Airport Commission currently disputes this. And now with the Kaiser Air expansion plans, we're facing the prospect of more jets traveling in and out of Livermore. If this expansion happens, it will be at the expense of all the residents living here. Please, for the sake of everyone living in the Tri-Valley, consider our quality of life regarding this airport expansion. A fact is that the airport stands to make millions of dollars due to this expansion. What will be the benefit to the residents of Livermore, Pleasanton, and Dublin? Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Huntsman. Melissa Huntsman, please unmute yourself.
I agree with everything she's had, it's like you can't even sit in your backyard when those planes go up in the air, you can't hear yourself talk, you can't enjoy the beauty of Livermore because they are so loud. And it will really be a hardship on all of us that live under that flight path of those planes because we can't even enjoy our backyards anymore, I mean, we're gonna be forced to like move somewhere else. That's all I have to say, this is a bad idea, and it would really be a hardship on a lot of people under that flight path.
And that was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you, I guess we'll, at this point, we'll close the public comment. And we're on now to item, agenda item four, the consent calendar. And we're on now to item, agenda item four, the consent calendar. And I know with respect to the minutes that some of the council members may need to recuse themselves. So does any council member want to pull a particular item for discussion? Seeing none. And before we go to any kind of vote, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on the consent calendar?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll open and close the public comment on the consent calendar. I see Councilmember Cake has her hand up.
Yeah, Councilmember Banano and I just need to abstain, right? Not recuse ourselves from the vote.
Yeah, yeah, abstain. Sorry. So do you want to specify which of the draft minutes you want to?
Oh, yeah, please abstain from the, I don't, my computer to start up the dates in November because we were not here.
Okay, so they're both of them, 11/9 and 11/16?
Yes, those two we need to abstain from.
Okay, so then I think what we'll do is have a, let's have a motion on the minutes on 4-1, and then we'll do the others separately. Vice Mayor Monroe, are you moving the minutes?
So move.
Okay, and.
One second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano abstained for the record. Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Cake abstained for the record. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Passes three with two abstentions. So now we've got, oh, I see, I broke it up. The, now we can do items 4, 3, 2, 4, 2, 3, 4 in a block. Anybody care to make a motion on that? Is that you, Vice Mayor Monroe?
Just keep, keep on the roll. Yes, so move for the remaining item.
Do I have a second? Okay, great. Moved to second. If we have a roll call, please.
Member Banano?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Councilmember Cake?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Right, passes unanimously. We're now on to public hearings, item 5 dot 1, to hearing to consider the Historic Resources Update Project. And could we have a staff report at this point, please?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'd like to introduce our project manager for this project, Assistant Planner Jake Potter. Jake? Thank you. I'm just gonna quickly share my screen here. One moment, please. Right, good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, tonight we'll be discussing the Historic Resources Update Project, which would update and modernize Livermore's historic preservation program. Livermore has a rich history dating back to its founding in 1869. From being founded along the Transcontinental Railroad to its wine-winning awards at the Exposition Universale in Paris, to hosting rodeos since 1918, Livermore's always been unique. And this unique history has shaped Livermore's built environment and lends to its distinctive charm. To better conserve Livermore's history and its community character, the city council authorized funding in January 2020 to update Livermore's historic preservation program. Since February of 2020, staff's been working with a historic preservation consultant, people helping the Historic Preservation Commission, Planning Commission, Livermore Heritage Guild, and the City Historian to complete project. The National Park Service and the California Office of Historic Preservation recommend in its standard practice for local jurisdictions to have three main components of historic preservation program. One is a historic context statement, two is a historic resources inventory, and three is a historic preservation ordinance. This update project includes all three components to ensure that Livermore's historic resources are documented, identified, and protected. Project would establish a new citywide historic context statement, create a new historic resources inventory that would update and replace Livermore's existing inventories, and would revise the existing historic preservation ordinance and standards. So we'll begin with kind of the first leg of historic preservation here, and those are historic context statements, which are the foundational policy document for preservation planning and are commonly used by local jurisdictions across California. Context statements describe a community's or region's broad patterns of historical development that are physically represented in the built environment. It's important to note that historic context statements are not comprehensive chronologies, but instead identify historic themes and related property types that have significantly shaped a given location. A historic preservation consultant has prepared a new citywide historic context statement for Livermore using the National Park Service and California Office of Historic Preservation Guidelines. The context statement covers the entire geographic area of Livermore and spans from 1839 to 1975. Document identifies seven main contexts and additional 22 themes, some of which include wineries and vineyards, farms, livestock and dairies, rail, science and technology, et cetera. And the context statement subsequently establishes the necessary features required of a property to make it historic. Or that might be certain style of windows or doors, as an example. In this way, the context statement links the themes to the built environment, and that really is the core function of historic context. It translates Livermore's broad history into important property types that can be easily identified and confirmed. Although no longer substantially represented in Livermore's built environment, statement does describe in some detail the early inhabitants of Livermore Valley, colonial tribes, Spanish colonialization, and Mexican rule, including the Rancho land grants from the Mexican government, one of which Robert Livermore eventually purchased. And this ensures a more complete view of history. While the context statement does include a light touch on, on the indigenous tribes and populations of the area, the primary focus of the context statement and survey is on the physical built environment of the city since its incorporation. Though staff does intend to do a deeper dive into those cultural resources during the upcoming general plan update, where it'd be appropriate to evaluate the baseline and consider policies addressing the city's indigenous and cultural resources. Ultimately drafting a historic context statement is consistent with the general plan, which calls for developing historic context statements to help create categories of historic significance within Livermore. The historic property types documented in this statement are subsequently identified in the built environment in the historic resources inventory. So that brings us to the second part of historic preservation, which are the stories. And so these catalog all historical and potentially historical sites within a defined geographic area. Inventories can include properties determined to be non-historical as well, in order to help local preservation planning decisions. Livermore currently maintains two inventories, both of which would be updated and replaced by the proposed citywide historic resources inventory for your consideration this evening. Using National Park Service and Office of Historic Preservation Guidelines, the consultant has conducted new research and inventoried all properties throughout Livermore. And similar to the existing inventories, the new document includes historical and potentially historical documents, and has identified about 70 historical properties throughout the city and about 220 potentially historical properties. Taken together, these represent about 1% of all of Livermore's parks. Historical and potentially historical properties include Ravenswood, Eggman Ranch, Fort Surt Hall, the Chinoni Building, and so forth. Creating a new historic resources inventory is also consistent with the general plan, which calls for conducting a citywide survey to document and identify historic resources and to periodically update. Ultimately, the historical and potentially historical properties identified would be protected from onsite development activities that would impair the resource by revised historic preservation ordinance and standards, which does bring us to the third part of the historic preservation program, which are the certificates of appropriateness. California Government Code allows cities to establish regulations that provide for the protection of sites having special historical interest. Includes standards that generally regulate the use and reappearance of these resources to maintain the community sense of place and character. Although there's no statewide requirement and variability between local jurisdictions is high, California cities most commonly adopt the certificate of appropriateness standards, which are essentially just planning permits needed before changes are allowed to historic property. Known as COAs. And this COA review ensures development work will not materially impair a historic resource, but that it no longer conveys. Livermore currently maintains a historic preservation ordinance that requires historic review of any activity, including even painter landscaping work to any property over 50 years of age. Although the standards, the current standards do help preserve historic resources in Livermore, at times they are inflexible and discourage rehabilitation. In order to improve the standards, staff reviewed the California Office of Historic Preservation Recommendations and other effective ordinances from other California cities. The new ordinance would apply to historical and potentially historical sites identified upfront in the historic resources inventory that we've. This folk, this, this would focus historic review on properties that significantly represent Livermore's past, ensuring their protection, but remove the burden from the majority of Livermore's properties that are non-historical. So again, this would apply, these new standards would apply to about 1% of the city's parcels, where the current standard applied to about 50% of the city's park. Oh, in order to further clarify and implement the city's historic preservation program, the project also proposes to remove and replace the historic zoning map overlays and the new historic resources inventory, and to ensure the downtown specific plan standards are consistent with citywide standards. Ultimately, these regulatory changes are consistent with the general plan as well, which call for periodic revisions to the development review procedure and the downtown specific plan, which seeks to identify and preserve Livermore's downtown. Now, in order to complete the project, staff conducted a robust public outreach campaign in order to notify all properties that would be impacted by the proposed changes. Given the COVID-19 shelter-in-place requirements beginning in March of 2020, the outreach campaign was shifted primarily to social media and physical mailings. Staff and Historic Preservation Commission hosted a series of digital workshops, and staff released social media posts and city website notifications prior to each workshop to encourage attendance. From October through December, staff also sent letters to every property that would be impacted by these proposed changes, about 285 properties. We also communicated with organizations and agencies that would be impacted by the proposed changes, like Livermore Downtown Inc., Livermore Valley, Don't Unify School District, the Heritage Guild, and several religious institutions throughout the city. As of the report's preparation, about 25% of property owners had responded to the letter via phone or email, and staff corresponded with or attempted to contact with all of these properties. Staff also encouraged owners of identified properties to provide additional information regarding their home's significance. Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the project on February 4th, and the Planning Commission reviewed the project on March 2nd, and both voted to recommend project. Ultimately, the Historic Resources Update Project conforms to National Park Service and Office of Historic Preservation Guidelines, implements the general plan and downtown specific plan, documents identifies and protects Livermore's historical resources, encourages preservation and rehabilitation of historical resources throughout the city, and will better maintain Livermore's heritage and unique character, and ultimately better protect Livermore's past or the future. For these reasons, the Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and staff recommend the city council adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA, adopt a resolution approving the specific plan amendment and policy proposals, produce an ordinance adopting the Development Code Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment, and instruct staff to file the notice of exemption. But that concludes my presentation. I do welcome any questions you may have, and would like to note that Andrea Galvin and Amanda Yoder-Dwayne from GP Consulting are also available, and they were instrumental in helping complete this work.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to staff questions, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close the public comment period on this. And now, do we have any questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, thank you. Good report. I enjoyed actually learning quite a bit more about this than I, than I knew before. So I do have a few questions. How often does the inventory get updated? This is something that we don't let just sit. Definitely be updated occasionally.
Yeah, so the best practice is to do it every few years. You know, kind of as we noted, we haven't done a citywide survey in about 30 years.
And so if I, quick math says that we, it sounds like we have not surveyed or taken account of about half of the total parcels, the total properties. We have 13,000 plus that are non-historic, about 300 that are either potentially historic or historic. So will those other properties be assessed and be added to the database as having been surveyed?
It's a good question. So those, basically any property that was not 50 years old, when the inventory occurred, you're correct, was not, was not assessed, was disqualified because it did not meet sort of the minimum standards for historic significance. But moving forward, as these properties do become 50 years of age, we, they, they will be analyzed when development applications are proposed on the project. We'll analyze them for significance at that time.
So is it fair to say then that 14,000 or so properties are over 50 years old in our city? Is that, is that a fair way to summarize what you just said?
Yeah, that's correct.
Wow, okay, that's surprising number to me, anyway. Okay, a couple more quick questions. So it seems to me, after trying to digest this, it was a very well-written report, but it is, it was kind of hard for me to get to the bottom line on this. And I guess this is sort of just a yes or no. Do these changes make it any more or less likely, or maybe no change at all, to the overall impact of making sure we protect our historic properties? Sounds like this streamlines things. It sounds like it's overall a good way to get everything, you know, sort of draw a circle around everything, say what is significant, what is, what may be potentially, and what's not, manage it that way, but we don't, we don't lose any ability to ensure we protect these properties. Is that a fair way to, is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay, and I have two more questions that are quick but slightly off-axis. What happens to county historic assets? I know it's maybe not our issue, but who, does, does the county have a plan like this? And they're tracking things that aren't in any incorporated area?
Yeah, so the county has its own Historic Preservation Commission, and it also has conducted surveys throughout the county area that are similar in nature.
Okay, and last question is, what about non-property-based artifacts, historic documents, historic artifacts that are, you know, assets that are not a property? Does the city, I mean, we have some room somewhere that has all the things that are, you know, we've, we've tried to collect, or is that the historic preservation's job? I mean, do we have a, a place where we keep other assets that are of historic value to us as a community?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, you know, because these documents function in a regulatory way, they don't necessarily apply to individual objects. The focus here is on physical development. But oftentimes, communities do have their own historic preservations societies, like, like we have the Livermore Heritage Guild. And they do have a collection of various documents of Livermore's.
Okay, so we basically delegate that to, to organizations that, whose job is to, we entrust, we entrust them with those items?
That's correct.
Great, okay, thank you. That's all I had. Really nice report. Thank you.
Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to echo Councilmember Banano's point about, I thought the report, Jake, was very thorough, including all the attachments that you provided was, and not only was it thorough, but it was also very, I found very interesting. I also wanted to make just a special thanks to the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the Planning Commission, both of which had reviewed this material and took public comments and, and I think really delved quite deeply into some of the changes. And I certainly appreciate the work that those two organizations, two commissions spent on this. And it certainly helps me in terms of understanding the context and the importance of what we're doing here tonight. So I, those are my comments. I just, again, thanks to not only Jake and the staff within the city, but also the commissions, both the Planning Commission and Historic Preservation Commission, for their work in this as well. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe?
Well, I'll pile on the thanks. This is really fascinating. Really appreciate the, the work that was done here. I, the thing that stands out to me that has not been mentioned is the, what, what historic is? And the idea that we're looking 50 years in the past. I'm just a little, it feels pretty recent to me. 50 years in the past was 1971? That doesn't feel very historic, but maybe I'm just getting old. So I guess I'm wondering about whether, I mean, I guess I would have set it back 100 years, but I, I'm just questioning how we think about that, not the report itself, so.
Real quick, the 50 years is set, what, by federal law kind of concept?
Yeah, so that's the, the minimum threshold for the National Park Service. So we do look at anything that's at least 50 years old and, and earlier.
I, I should have clarified that it's, I, I did understand it was the minimum. I, it, it seems, it seems.
It, it seems, it seems an odd number given how, the lifespan of an individual that, and that this does not even cover what we hope to be most people's lifespans.
So, anyway, all right, Councilmember Kick.
From my understanding, 50 is the minimum, but really it has to have some sort of historical significance, so. You know, some people weren't alive 50 years ago, Trish, and so it is, it's history to us. But I, I I really appreciate the, the learning that I did here and the difference between what we deem historical in, in this building context and your explanation that we will look at other historical contexts throughout the city, including the history of the native peoples that were here during our general plan update. So it's not that those things are forgotten, it's that, that's a whole separate area, so I just wanted to highlight that important piece that was, was valuable to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've got a, a question, just to make sure I understand things. The 50 years was the point at which you consider something. That doesn't mean it automatically becomes historic. So four, four out of five of us are considered that, but you know, but we're not necessarily historic. But the, the other thing I wanted to ask, maybe to translate all of the, the words in this into an understanding, and I think it builds on what Councilmember Banano was saying. If we think about it, we've got buildings that are already 50 years and older, and that's a certain proportion. But the city has grown in the last 50 years dramatically. The question I have, if you think about the buildings we have in the, that are 25 years old, but less than 50, is there anything that we've built in that timeframe that would, other than age, meet the requirement to be considered historic?
There are some special considerations. So the National Park Service kind of has three standards that you have to meet to be considered historic, and things that are less than 50 years old could be historic if they are, you know, related to a person, an event, architecture, or information of historic significance, and they maintain what's called their integrity, which means they basically aren't destroyed. So in our inventory, we did not find anything less than 50 years old for, for Livermore that was historical, but it can happen.
Oh, oh, sure, I know it can happen. But the, the question is, other than the special, you know, event happening, it's something just purely on the construction itself, I don't think we have anything that meets the criteria for being historic, just based on its archi, you know, something. As I was just checking, so you translate all of the the words into, there's nothing that anyone can point to that would meet the criteria for special consideration in that 25 to 50-year age. I was just notified that the consultant has their hand up and wishes to speak, and I let that happen at this time.
Mayor, we will unmute her.
Ms. Yoder, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. This is Amanda Yoder-Dwayne, one of the consultants that worked on this survey and context update. I just wanted to kind of address some of the questions about the 50-year threshold and whether there's anything in Livermore less than 30 years of age that might be significant. The 50-year cutoff is, you know, it's not really an arbitrary number, it's just kind of the number that's included in the federal guidance on historic preservation. And so it's kind of the general estimate on when things could be, you know, it could have sufficient reflection, excuse me, sufficient time to develop a historical perspective and to understand how an event or architecture or another area of significance might have developed and matured over time, sorry. The, there are instances where something less than 50 years of age can be considered historic. In those instances, you'd have to kind of prove through additional analysis that it was of exceptional significance. And there are, you know, additional steps that you can go through to analyze that and determine that. I did, we didn't find any in Livermore, but that doesn't mean that, that doesn't exist. There are things like the Frank Gehry House in the city of Santa Monica that was from, you know, the 1980s or 1990s, and they kind of identified that as something as being exceptionally significant, so they didn't have to wait 50 years to understand how important it was. Hopefully that helps. I'm sorry about that. I stumbled over my words a little bit, but I hope that helped provide additional understanding.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, my understanding is that based on the architecture itself, there isn't anything in that timeframe or whatever, and, and perhaps there might be some significance of somebody later becomes nationally prominent, but other than that, there's nothing there that stands out. Vice Mayor Monroe, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, since I was the one that I think originally raised it, I wanted to say thank you. And, and really appreciate the words around gives time for historical perspective to develop. I think that's a very helpful statement about the, which really does frame it in the lifetime of an individual and why that would make sense, that, that, that number would make sense in that frame. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments? And if not, somebody care to make a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, we've moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warren.
Hi. The item passes unanimously. We're now on to item, agenda item six matters for consideration. Six dot one is the oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID-19 emergency.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. It's Mark Roberts, your City Manager and Director of Emergency Services. And just a moment to bring the item up. All right. Want to start this off this evening with our overall slide here. And so first of all, this is dating back to the beginning of the year. The great news in the slide is, of course, the dramatic decline that you see from the numbers that we had in January until more recently. The more concerning news in this graph is the last month, where you see that our numbers have become very stubborn at the level that they are at. And, you know, picking particular days and weeks, you can see that we actually have a little bit of activity that's heading in the wrong direction here. So first and foremost, we want to remind everyone that while we're making a lot of progress, the, the battle is not won yet on COVID. And you only need to read the newspaper, listen to the news, to note that there is a lot of development worldwide and in the United States that's making the business of stamping out the last of this more complicated. So again, for those of us who have already been vaccinated, to continue to abide by the guidelines put out by the CDC for vaccinated folks, and for those of us who have not been vaccinated, special precaution as well to keep us all safe moving forward. Our total case count in Livermore now is over 4,100. And you see our seven-day rolling average, new cases per 100,000 is 4.66. The 4.66 is an unadjusted number, and the numbers, of course, we're used to looking at from the county are actually adjusted numbers. Counties that test more than the required amount essentially have their numbers adjusted downward, and the flip is also the case, counties that under test have their numbers adjusted upward. So we are, we have a little bit of apples and oranges in the numbers here, but these are just the pure unadjusted numbers. The California Blueprint for a Safer Economy divides essentially us into four tiers. We have moved from purple through red into the current orange tier in Alameda County. So you can see that our adjusted cases per 100,000 is 3.5. And that data trails, because these are final numbers that are put in that ultimately make the determination. So you can see we're trailing back to March 27th there. It's because essentially for about a 10-day period after the tests are actually administered, adjustments are made to make sure that people's place of residence is correctly indicated, and that the testing data has been correlated between all possible test sites, since someone can be tested outside the county at their place of work, and that those numbers ultimately have to be transmitted back to Alameda County. You can see our overall testing positivity rate and our lowest HPI quartile numbers are doing very well versus the overall tier here. However, most recently, for the last couple of weeks, we have flattened, we are no longer dropping in cases. So we don't have an estimated timeline at this point of moving to the yellow tier. The state announced during the last week that we will be ultimately moving beyond the blueprint to fully reopen the economy on June 15th if we meet two criteria statewide. And the first has to do with vaccine availability, so that everybody who is 16 years and over, who wishes to be inoculated, has access to vaccine. And the second is a consistently low burden of disease, meaning that hospitalizations are stable and low, and specifically hospitalizations among fully vaccinated individuals remain low. Essentially, that those are basically designed that our current vaccination strategy continues to be effective at protecting the overall population. And finally, even with that move on June 15th, there will be continuing modest restrictions at one end on extremely large events, and at the other end on essentially all of the common sense issues that have been brought forward until further notice dealing with essentially sanitation, mask wearing, and similar items in certain circumstances. Overall, in the Tri-Valley and in Livermore in particular, you can see the testing totals here. The Stanford Valley Care Alameda County Fairgrounds numbers is a conclusion from, it is from April 27th until April 1st of 2021, when they concluded operations for testing at the fairgrounds. The City Health Urgent Care are numbers essentially that are essentially current up to the current time. You'll see a total of almost 39,000 total tests been given between those two facilities. Over here, you see a snapshot of the county's, one of the county's webpages there. Some pretty interesting data here. So you can see that overall in the county, more than half of residents over 16 years of age have now received at least one dose of vaccination. You can see in Livermore that our number is almost 50% have received a first dose, and almost a third of us are fully vaccinated. So a lot of strong progress happened, you can know just from the last time I gave an update, just three weeks ago. So we continue to deliver a significant amount of vaccine within the county, including within Livermore. You probably have heard by now, but if you haven't, as of today, Alameda County has opened the vaccination appointment-based system to all residents 16 and above. So of course, this change was going to be made statewide later in the week. And we are now the fourth county in the Bay Area to remove all restrictions, essentially for all adults and those who are 16 years or older. The Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines are approved for 18 and above, and Pfizer has been approved and tested for 16 and above. So we have updated our city's website to provide this new information. And we are putting links tying back to the appointment systems for various providers. So that is on our website. You can see that at the bottom of the screen, the full address there, or you can come into our main webpage and hit a link on that to, to figure that out. So our challenge, of course, during the next, oh, couple of weeks, of course, is going to be that we now have more people eligible to be vaccinated than vaccine supply. And while we do expect during these first couple of weeks after the opening to be some difficulties getting appointments, we do expect that to ease as we head through the end of April and head into May. A quick update on our vaccine point of distributions. Of course, the Alameda County Fairgrounds is a large-scale drive-through appointment only, and we essentially have three different entities offering appointments. And Stanford Valley Care and Sutter Health are also providing shots on behalf of Alameda County Public Health. The county is no longer has personnel at the site, but folks do not have to be a member of either the Stanford or Sutter Healthcare Systems to get a vaccination at the fairgrounds. We've had a series of local points of distribution at the Robert and Livermore Community Center, and we did that on the second, third, and ninth. More than 1,600 first doses were administered, and second doses were going to be administered on April 23rd, 24th, and 30th. In addition to that, the California OES FEMA team came out from Oakland. They're based at the Oakland Coliseum Site today and did an onsite assessment at two sites in Livermore. So we're very excited about that. And that information will be solidifying. We will be reaching out in particular to our most vulnerable populations. Our general pods have done pretty well overall in the community at reaching out a broad spectrum in the community. We want to have a special concentration, especially with this Cal OES and FEMA team. They have a responsibility to be essentially serving parts of the community that are underserved. And so we'll be working with the school district, our nonprofit providers, and others to make sure those that essentially live in the areas around the main Nissan site, north of downtown, and other areas that you've seen on our maps that have been particularly hard hit by COVID are served through these pods. But we do expect a total of three days to happen over the next period of time. We're very excited. We've done a lot of pre-planning that made the Cal OES and FEMA team able to respond to us and to set up a, a federal site here in the city of Livermore. And especially for those who are interested in this site, you can go and reach out to, they'll be, we'll be doing the, the appointment base through the school district on this, as we have with the other ones. But we're particularly emphasizing with this outreach, those that have not been able to make it to the other pods and those that, that are, have low income or other special needs in order to get vaccinated. A quick update on our financial assistance. The council's authorized more than $2 million for small businesses, and you can see the rundown there of the various categories there, including our citywide small business assistance program as a partner with Alameda County and the CARES Act Grant Program, our residential rental assistance program, and our commercial rent abatement managing program. And you can see the status of each of those. We're moving through that. In addition, the council directed staff to determine if there were other community needs related to either COVID-19 or the financial hardship that was imposed by COVID-19. And we will be bringing back an item for the council that does concentrate on those that are most vulnerable within the community, either through job loss, homelessness, or other special areas where we'll be spending additional resources this year to bolster the safety net services that we traditionally fund through CDPG and other items. So that will be a future item on your agendas, and will be in addition to and combining a portion of the unused funds that you've previously authorized here. So we'll be adding additional dollars as well as taking the, the last unused bits of dollars from the $2 million that you previously authorized. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Just to help me remember for the commercial rent abatement, that was $7,500 max each, is that right?
That is correct.
So times 40, that'd be 300,000, so you still have some availability there. Even if you paid out all 39 at 7,500, there's still some room if people still need to apply.
A little bit, but we are sort of encouraging folks to wrap that program up so that we can redeploy the resources appropriately for, for other areas if needed.
Okay, good, thanks.
Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, a couple, couple of questions. The, the e-Gift program, is there any expiration on that? If, will, will it just stay in, in force until the money is exhausted? Is there a 65%? It seems like that's plateauing a little bit, maybe not, but I just wonder about, does it ever cut off?
We do not are not proposing a uh an expiration on that, and we actually do expect. Probably in the next thirty days or so, um, those funds to be uh exhausted. You did see, of course, this time that the county had, of course, promised to fund that and their funding has come through. Um, so that has helped us with the last piece of that um puzzle for uh businesses that were out in the county. Um, the city uh helped in in that process. Um, by making sure that those funds were available immediately and the and the county has supplied their funding portion of it now.
Great, thank you, um, what is the? Uh, what is the occupancy, restaurant occupancy level for yellow tier? Should we move into that tier? I'm just wondering what what we're allowed to do there.
We are at fifty percent now in orange and I believe, um. Gosh, I I was gonna say it's a hundred percent, but I am not certain that that is correct.
I'm not sure either, I I was curious because when we say full open in in June of. June fifteenth, and if we were moving the yellow tier, are we full open? What what does that mean exactly in terms of restaurants' ability to fully populate inside, so?
And I, and I think at this point, based on where our numbers are, is plateauing. Um, you know, the most certain date we have obviously is the June fifteenth date, assuming that the that the uh requirements that the governor has laid down are met. Um, we would go to to full uh operations. Um, my recollection is that Yellow Tier does the same thing, but at this point. Um, we're sort of plateauing just above the boundary of Yellow Tier.
All right, okay, two more quick questions. One is the the chart you showed where we have the overall, uh, I guess for Alameda County overall. Seven day rolling average and then the lowest HPI healthy, lowest healthy population index. I think that's what this is, so what I find interesting, do we have those numbers for Livermore? The the overall and then the lowest HPI, it's sort of given indication of. Of sort of how disparate your population is, I mean, you could have these hotspots, right? I'm just wondering, how do we compare in Livermore to the delta in the county numbers, if that question makes sense? Do we know what those numbers are for Livermore?
It uh, the question does make sense, I do not have that data um by our city on there, um, and certainly. Um, uh, part of that is we would expect that that our lowest quartile would perform much like the counties. Um, on that particular, so I would expect that disparity. Um, if you sort of see where are the hotspot of our total cases are on by zip code, uh, that falls in with that. Um, so uh, but we don't have the, I don't have the detailed data that you're looking for.
Okay, yeah, that that was my guess as well, it just, it it sort of gets to this equitable equitable vaccination issue in terms of. Where you have hotspots, are you getting vaccinations to the hotspots and that? The difference between those two numbers sort of is an indicator of that to me. Last question is, have we, is there, has there been any mobile vaccination? Uh, process performed at all, I mean, I know. Early on, we heard a little bit, I mean, some people just may not be able to get there. And it seems like the systems are working pretty good as long as somebody can get to the location. Do we know, has anybody done any mobile vaccinations?
So, yes, the county uh is actually rolling out a a program, um, so. And in fact, in in the city of Livermore, our mobile vaccinations um uh first concentrated on uh some of our homeless population. And we've had a facility there. In addition, I just uh received notification today. Uh, that uh, the county is coordinating through uh their fire section and asked uh for our cooperation with LPFD. Um, and both uh, the city manager Pleasanton and I authorized our participation in that. To essentially do a a rolling vaccination to give some help to their staff at the county. Um, to uh, deal with homebound uh folks. Um, so yes, uh, that's a second program and uh we're also looking at others. Um, for those who maybe are not completely uh homebound, but do have mobility limitations. Um, to make uh the vaccination as as easy as possible overall.
Great, great, thank you for that, I'm glad to hear that, thanks very much.
Okay, I want to quickly, uh, uh, Mr. Roberts, say that a couple of weeks ago, our city numbers. Pretty much replicated the county numbers with respect to the overall and the uh healthy uh place index, I believe. And that you pointed out that, you know, some of the places you're trying to get the distribution site for for the. With Calio S uh and FEMA, that's going to be targeting that census tract where we do have the higher impact, right?
That is correct. In fact, uh, one of the facilities is going to be at Maineston Park to make it easier uh for that uh community.
Right, so we finally did get the data from the county by census tract, we do see our hotspots and. And that's now the focus for the for the pods. So I just want to summarize it that way. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, so, um, following up on the um, on the uh mobile, um. I volunteered at the uh, at at the uh, Robert Livermore Community Center, um. Vaccination clinic, which I just want, I, which actually what I wanted to say is that that was such a wonderful exercise in. Intergovernmental uh co- cooperation, uh, extremely smooth, lots of volunteers. And it went, it went, went really, really well. Um, however, uh, there was a question there around lack of internet use, and I'm wondering if we have. Um, ways to to uh, to deal with people who cannot use the internet to make appointments.
So on the city side of the house, one of the things that we're uh exploring is uh setting up uh. Uh, computers at the library to facilitate that. Um, as you'll know, previously, we did uh remove most of the workstations there when we were under a tighter restrictions. But as we move into the tier that we're currently in, uh, we have the ability to have a couple of workstations available. The other way we were doing it is through our nonprofit partners. Um, and essentially having the nonprofit partner be the place where that computer or that tablet link happens. Um, so a caseworker or other uh staff member um helping a certain population. So we're, we're trying to address this through a couple of different approaches.
The other thing, the other thing that I recall hearing at the uh Alameda County uh health uh people's call. That they're setting up a phone-based way to make reservations as well. And so I think that was about a week and a half ago or two weeks ago that they were talking about that, so that might be in place at this point. And uh, we asked the city manager to check on that and um. I guess it wouldn't make any sense to put it on our website for people who can't get to it, but the. Point is, putting that information there might help others who do have access, help those who don't get to the uh, to the phone.
Very good, I will certainly do that. And to follow up on a previous question, um, the uh, the levitation on dining has two components. One is the fifty percent component, uh, and one is the uh two hundred person maximum component. The two hundred person maximum uh essentially goes away in the yellow tier, but the fifty percent does not. Um, and that actually aligns pretty well with the six foot distancing, which is still required even when you don't have uh any of the percentage requi-. And so from that perspective, I believe. All the way until and maybe even slightly beyond the the June fifteenth date. Um, you know, most of our restaurants indoors will be operating at about that fifty percent capacity.
Okay, Councilmember Kik.
Um, I, I don't remember which organizations it was, but there are organizations that were doing like census outreach. Um, phone banking and they have now switched over to vaccine outreach, so they're calling and saying, did you make an appointment? Do you need help? Um, so that is happening in the county, I just don't have the exact information right now to share.
Yeah, so I think if we could get that information out up on our website, so then those, it could help people or trying to help people through the phone. So, are any other uh questions from the council at this point? If not, uh, is there any members from the public who wish to comment on this item?
Evening, Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, we'll close the public comment on this, and uh, thank you very much for your uh report. I, I'll just say it, it's seems more relaxed now than, say, a few months ago. And it looks like good progress, so thank you. So we're on to uh item six dot two. Which is a discussion and direction regarding a resolution denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian racism. arising due to fears of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And affirming the city council's commitment to the well-being and safety. Of Asian Pacific Islander communities and reaffirming its support. Of a culture of welcome, inclusion and respect. We have the uh, the staff report, please, on this.
Honorable Mayor, it's Mark Roberts, the city manager, and I'd like to introduce uh Christine Martin, our deputy city manager, who's going to give us a brief introduction on this item.
Thank you, City Manager Roberts, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And uh, the mayor already uh laid out the majority of the item before you this evening. I'll just add that uh, this item is on your agenda this evening at the request of the mayor. Um, at a March tenth, twenty twenty one Alameda County Mayor's Conference. Uh, the Mayor's Conference adopted a resolution, a very similar resolution. And at that time, they called upon all counties, cities and local governments across the United States to adopt a similar commitment. To reaffirm their solidarity with Asian Pacific Islander communities. And commit to combating hate and improving health equity. And so, um, in conjunction with that request by the Alameda County Mayor's Conference. Mayor Warner requested that this item be on the agenda for council's consideration this evening, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any uh questions, comments from the council? Okay, uh, any members of the uh public uh wish to comment on this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close the public comment on this. Uh, so I'm, I'm pleased that we're able to bring this uh forth and um. Matt, uh, join all our other uh cities in Alameda County and other parts of the Bay Area and the country. So with that, um, would, can we have a uh motion?
I'll move.
Okay, look at all those hands, there's a lot of fast, so who was second on that? That was uh, I can't tell, uh, vice, uh, Councilmember Banana. Okay, moved and uh seconded? Any other uh discussion on the issue? If not, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Banana.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kik.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye, so thank you, passes unanimously. With that, we're now on to item seven. The uh council committee reports and matters initiated by the city manager, city attorney staff and council members. And we traditionally start with um, Councilmember Kik.
Yes, um. I filled out my form, so you can look there, there's not a lot, um, but the one thing that I forgot to fill out in my form was from um, Lafta. Uh, the wheels bus, um, there was a matters initiated. At the Lafta meeting for us to look into bus stops near Goodness Village. Um, and I worked with Lafta to connect them to the um. Executive Director of Goodness Village, and they are working together with staff on a bus stop, so um. That is the the biggest thing I have to report, um, and.
And you, you might mention who initiated it.
Well, uh, I had already had the meeting planned, but then another member initiated it and I said, don't worry.
Oh, I thought you did.
The meeting's already, the meeting's already happening, so it was a behind, a behind the scenes. Uh, connecting, connecting of of smart people, so it's good.
Okay.
Buses.
It's quick action. Okay, uh, Councilmember um, Carling.
Speaking of Goodness Village, uh, Vice Mayor and I had a tour of the tiny homes and. Where they will be located at uh, at the church. Uh, it's very impressive and the uh. The executive director of the of the Goodness Village is very impressive and. I'm heartened to hear about the bus stop because that came up during our visit and um.
I went right after you and she told me about it.
Okay, well, good for you, okay, that was good. Uh, speaking of the Vice Mayor, he, she and I have done a quite a few uh equity and inclusion meetings. Um, also participated in League of California Cities. Um. I took a water one oh one from zone seven since I'm now part of the. Uh, since I have some responsibility for representing the city and some of the water commissions. Um. I also uh did a webinar with the, with the folks that are. Uh, developing the well at Sunset, which is at the corner of Concanon and Homes. Across from what I think people refer to as the old Lucky's. Uh, that's been uh run down for a number of years. Uh, they're about ready to um, they are ready to lease, and so they had a nice webinar with the. With the people that live nearby and I'm one of those people that live nearby, so it was interesting to hear progress and see what the. Are my neighbors had to say about it, all very positive. And um, I'll also say that. Uh, Councilmember Banano and I met with some folks from Lawrence to talk about climate change, again, an interesting meeting. So that's it for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you, um, Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, so I uh, to say a word or two about the LDI meeting, um, was held on the sixteenth, I believe. March sixteenth, so they are, um, they have conducted a survey amongst their members. Um, and I, the city is also um, conducting a survey of local businesses, sort of get their. Feedback on uh what kinds of things they're looking for in order to help them continue to recover from pandemic. I think that uh Ms. Snedencore, the LDI Executive Director expects to have results on their survey. Uh, which, which talked to, I think the questions focus mostly on financial impacts. Other ways that maybe the city and other, other organizations might be able to continue to support them through this. Um, again, she, she will publish those data soon, and I'm sure we'll all get a chance to sort of hear that feedback. Um, I think uh, Mr. Vanderwater probably will. Will be custodian, as I understand it, of the city survey results, and I'm sure we'll hear that at some point as well. But just to let people know those surveys are are out and we'll soon get some, give them feedback on both of those surveys. Um, let's see, I attended the Chamber Business Alliance uh a few days ago, which I was a guest just to introduce myself to that group. That was enjoyable, and I'd like to know, how do we get a tour of? The uh Goodness Village, is that something?
I was supposed to send you an email connecting you with him, so she would like you to come tour. Uh, yes, she wants to see you.
Yeah, thank you very much, um, yeah, I'll just say one more thing about the meeting we held with the Livermore uh climate scientists, sort of something that um. Few of us thought might be good to get our staff members who are working on the Climate Action Plan to put the plan in front of the climate scientists. Uh, Livermore lent by Roger Ames and um just get their feedback on the plan, which uh was mostly good. I think it was actually mo- it was entirely good, they actually uh pointed the uh team. Um, in a couple of directions or made a couple suggestions to data they were using. Um, maybe more credible data in a couple of ways that I think just makes what we put out there a more credible report. Um, I think we are hoping that perhaps there'll be some, some follow-up ideas that we could explore. For partnerships between the lab and the city. And I think that uh Councilmember Carling um is going to help us initiate the same thing at Sandia. And we'll see if we can uh maybe get some cultivate some good ideas and for the mutual benefit of both uh the labs and the city, so that's it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, uh. I, I find myself and uh Councilmember Carling doing many of the same things these days, so um, I. I, I, as he said with him, I toured Goodness Village, um. I was really impressed at what we can do when we work together, it, it was, it was a wonderful tour. Um, not just looking at the tiny homes that are there, but looking at the way in which services are going to wrap around. And and work to making a complete community there. Um, so that, that was uh, that was. Uh, on the twenty third of of March, um. League of California Cities East Bay Division, and then every Tuesday and Thursday Equity and Inclusion. Um, I'm not going to read all of this, but I would encourage people to look at the supplemental packet. Because I included a very brief summary of what is going on, or you know, what, what, what the um agenda for each meeting was. Um, uh, and uh, going forward, my, I suspect that some of the presentations will be available for for the public. Um, and um, to say the, the uh Livermore Cultural Arts on. Uh, April seventh, there was a presentation by the Chief Cultural Ambassador uh discussing. Ways in which we're going to be going forward uh following, you know. you know, as we recover from the pandemic, new, new ways of thinking about um the arts within, with, within the city. Um, and ways to think about mission statements, uh, which is encouraging to a group of people who are looking to build the arts. So um, that pretty much wraps it up for me.
Okay, thank you. I'll go last here. I had a few meetings, and they're in the report. The ones that I would uh highlight here are one, we had a uh meeting with the Tri-Valley City Mayor's Meeting, and we had that with uh, meeting with Senator Glazer and Assembly uh person, Bauer Caon. And the um, what we were able to do is advocate for our joint agenda. And I'll just point out that if you combine the uh, the four cities and the town of Downville, Danville, we're, represent um, you know, a very large population. I think we're in the top thirteen uh equivalent cities in in California. So it's very meaningful for us all to get together. We had the opportunity to meet with them and discuss what, uh, you know, thank them for the legislation they've already passed and uh to tell us, tell them and for them to tell us, you know, what we're interested in the, in the future. Uh, the other one that um I would uh point out, as it was mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce Business Alliance, and there was a uh pretty uh detailed discussion on the airport. So that is winding its way through the various meetings, so people can understand what's going on. But that isn't going to come before the uh Planning Commission for a while, and then uh even a lot longer before it comes to the city council. We just want to mention that. Uh, at the recent uh LAFCO meeting, we approved the uh annexation of the land for the Chick-fil-A property. And Pleasanton was happy to hear that because that'll take some of the uh queuing lines off of the Pleasanton area next to their uh In-N-Out Burger. I, I assured them that our lines would just go to back up on the freeway all the way to Pleasanton. I'm sure it'd be so popular. But we have plenty of room for for our queuing lines. And I think uh, at the ITV Board Meeting, it was a changeover and and the new uh officers. And let's, I, and then today, I was at a um, you know, a project uh services kind of committee for the uh Alameda County Transportation Commission, and a few projects got uh approved. The one that I uh will note is, I don't know how many of you have gone through the Gilman Interchange at uh by the uh horse, you know, the horse track and uh on your way up maybe to REI or whatever. But uh, that's a really complicated, expensive project, and it's going into the next phase to get done. And uh, just take a look at what it takes to do something like that's uh impressive. So I would encourage people to just go look at the agenda and some of the packet, just to see how hard it is to retrofit freeways. So the, you know, the idea is when we build new stuff, we really got to think it through for the uh, for the future. So that's um all I have. Uh, so I think we're ready to adjourn. And we're gonna uh adjourn to a special city council planning commission, a joint meeting to review land use authority on April nineteenth at five P M. And to a regular city council meeting on April twenty-sixth at seven P M. And both meetings will be held uh virtually uh using Zoom. So thank you and good night.
Thank you and good night.
Good night.